Running wild with a broken chain. Half hour before I came here tonight, they there was an another person that called me that said that one person has five pit bulls. And couple of them runs loose. One of them breaks the chain all the time and they and they have to loosen the other one to get the other dog in or something. I she was rather upset. I think we probably should look at that or at least talk about it and try to again understand what we're what we want.
We do have an an ordinance that addresses vicious dogs and vicious animals, uh vicious and dangerous, I believe it is. I can't remember at this point.
I had to say a couple of people too.
Two people?
Couple of people. Yeah, there is, I know there's one on the east side of town we've had a problem with. I know they were issued a citation for animal at large this weekend. I know they've been issued at least one citation prior to that, so I I don't know that that we have. I'll have to review the ordinances, I hadn't looked at them today, but I don't know. We just keep ticketing them, they pay their ninety six dollars and they go on, I think. I don't know if we have any recourse, if we can declare them a nuisance or what, that may be something we want to look at for people who don't take responsibility for their animals and they continue to be loose. But these dogs are a continuous problem, we warned them before and I know I know at least two citations have been issued, maybe maybe as many as three, I know they're pretty upset. Last time they told us, why don't you just shoot the dog and I won't have to pay them money anymore, so.
Have you have you had any being attacked?
We we did have a a one animal attacked, ran out of garage and attacked another dog.
And had a hold of it shaking it.
Yeah, they they got it away and didn't kill the dog. But again, the way ordinances read, there has to be a second attack before we declare that dog vicious. It has to attack another animal or it has to attack a person before it can be declared vicious, so.
What kind of dog was this, do you know?
That's pit bull.
Could, is there any way that you can give give us a report on past year, how many dog calls we've had?
Dog calls?
Calls on dogs, you know, or or however you wanna.
Or how many dogs being arrested?
Animals running at large?
Yeah, anything on that.
Citation, you want actual times we've been called that, we we generally don't say, okay.
Not not citations.
I'm sure we can we can pull that up.
That's all I got, man.
And what I'd like to know is that if it's in the same area.
Same address?
No, just in the same area.
Well, we we sometimes do have calls to the same house, a lot of them from air general area, we have more dogs than I.
Any other spoke safety? Finance?
I don't have anything, I don't know if Greg does or not. Not really under finance, I just wanted to mention a couple items, one, uh basically work sessions, tax abatement, I like to either set up a work session and do that at a council meeting, hotel motel, and then, uh as I mentioned in some of my weekly updates, a a street work session. And in fact, uh we looked at the calendar night, we'd like to see if uh if we could have a work session January third, which is a Monday, to discuss streets. That would work for everybody, five thirty or later if need be, um on January third. Check your calendars and if that doesn't run into, nobody runs into a major problem, we'll go ahead and set one on the third to uh discuss streets, have of course randomly present, French Renneker, Iowa Concrete Paving Association, I believe will be in attendance and representative from uh the concrete company as well. Several agenda items, including the current street project, uh five year street plan and just some some contracting and bid letting issues that we thought we should have a discussion on before we let any additional projects.
I assume you need no.
I'll go ahead and set it on the third unless somebody comes to me this this week with a major problem, so.
Go ahead.
You wanna
We wanna make it five.
Do some budgeting at that same meeting or?
No, we could probably set up some budget meetings at that point, hopefully we'll have our revenue by the end of the month, county.
Five thirty?
Yes.
Anything else? Streets?
Well, no, I don't, I guess really have anything new, but I just wanted to ask John, I guess, a question. He could answer real quick. Did they plant the seeds on this grass seed and everything up? On Long Meadow, I guess, and I don't think there's any straw there was. They didn't, okay. I know the last time we talked to you, you thought they was gonna get it done.
I was here the last time, they were trying to get some seed down and then it didn't happen.
We did complete the the punch list or the walkthrough last week, as soon as we get a written copy back, I'll get the council a copy as well for both projects, Division Street and uh paving projects. Soon as we have that, we'll get you a copy of it.
So there is straw on on Ballard, so does that mean that seed they did put in the ground or did the citizens do that?
No, what on?
That little area Ballard where they had to run that, uh they ran a sewer line or something down there. Yeah, Long Meadow was done, but the next street down in Ballard wasn't done, except today I noticed I drove down Ballard and there was straw on there. But I'd had a citizen living there, they told me they was just gonna put down their own, so I don't know if they just did the whole block or if the contractor did it. The two I talked to did it so they wouldn't have to walk in mud. That was their primary concern, they wasn't so worried about the grass, they were worried about throughout the winter just stepping in mud and and they thought it would at least be better to step in straw than than mud, whether that's right or wrong, but.
Any areas that they did finish and did have the straw, though, if it does not come up in the spring, they'll still be responsible for reseeding those areas.
But there's a number one thing on streets.
I'm sorry?
There's a really number one item to talk about on streets, so.
Division Street, it's open.
Yeah. Yeah, Division Street's open.
Nice, I drove through. They must have been kind of small.
Must have been at night.
Been.
Hey, have you all, have you drove it, seriously? It's nice, it's open, a lot of hard work put in by a lot of people sitting at this table to get that done and yeah, it's pretty cool. Yeah, yeah, the next thing we need now is utility lights on, of course.
That's first thing I was told as we were driving.
I stopped looking at that.
I know. Mileage wise, it looked like it needed about six on each side, but they normally tell us what they recommend, but it looked like it needed about six per side when I drove it, but probably. It's nice.
We probably could have gone by with five, cause it would have been that much shorter if that curve wasn't.
Wait till you're driving.
We weren't going to even notice. Had we had we put that curve in there.
Too big a curve, so I'm concerned.
Me too, I that curve was told to me that we wouldn't even notice it. There's a big curve there.
It's a lot smaller than what they want. Hold the way to look at it.
John, is so you're pretty much, is what you're saying is it's pretty much done for the winter? I just wanted to know what, you know, what to be able to tell people when they ask.
Yeah, cause I think it's supposed to switch to cold weather coming in here next.
Supposed to be down to ten or nine.
Any else for streets? New business, I'm number one, consider resolution waiving the preliminary plot and approving the final plot for PD two subdivision. Mike Peterson's here tonight, if you guys got any questions for him.
There is a request to to vacate the current utility easement on the north side of the property. I don't think that's gonna be an issue from our perspective. Perhaps when the highway wasn't there and the street went straight through, but I don't think that's gonna be an issue from our perspective at that location.
That was gonna be my question, I was gonna ask Randy. You know, we was talking about extra water hookup and that issue of where that might go, which isn't very far from here.
This wouldn't provide enough space for that type of facility.
Motion to approve.
Support. Emotional support, any discussion?
You gonna expand your business down there, Mike?
Buy the ground and build new cheaper, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. I'm sorry, this is a resolution, no call.
Raleigh. Raleigh?
Oh, aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Pilcher?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion to carry it. It's your job.
We need to do that again, to do that, or?
No, uh. Anybody has any objection to vacating that easement, I would just, you know, have it included in this motion, unless we wanna do it on separate.
I think we have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to have a public hearing on the easement portion and a few other requirements, can't just do it as part of the resolution, that's why it's noted on there.
Thanks for coming tonight, good luck. I'm number two, is consider payment French for various engineering projects, there's three of them, the amount to twenty thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Support. Emotional support, any discussion?
Are these the final payments for all these bills? Final payment for any of these bills?
Division Street won't be closed out until the spring, um Long Meadow as well. Most of Long Meadow, well, the retainage won't be released until the spring either.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Carry it. I'm number three, is consider payment to Mike Nelson Concrete Paving for the pending Long Meadow and Swan Paving, amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and sixty three cents.
Motion to approve.
Support. Emotional support, any discussion?
I was just going through this, John, and I noticed item number eight for pavement removal, we went over that by about seventeen hundred dollars, did he have to go further on a driveway or was there? It just says pavement removal, doesn't specify driveway removal is number eleven, so I just wondered if he had. And then the the thirty percent of grading and cleanup, is that gonna be done in the spring or he's already got that done and would just do fertilizing, seeding and mulching in the spring? Well, well.
We we don't have a hundred percent.
Well, I know that Mike's trying to get a hold of me, so he knows how far back to come and at least level off some of my levy. Are we gonna wait till spring with that or? I think we had that already.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Carry it. I'm number four, is consider payment Shipley for Division Street projects, three hundred and thirteen thousand and fifty eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Support. Emotional support, any discussion?
Well, just one way. You were saying at the last meeting, Mike, that, or John, that um Shipley was going to have to use a different type of concrete when he finished pouring in the old leather?
No, I pointed out that
Different formula?
It was a different time used.
Mm-hmm.
Because of the fall, you don't use flash.
And you said he would absorb that cost, so I mean, I don't. Okay. I just don't wanna pay for something that he did, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion to carry it. I was just looking to see what was left on that, just retainage, basically. Okay, I'm number five, is consider a third reading of an ordinance rezoning lots one through eight, eleven, twelve, sixteen and seventeen in Park Place West Estates subdivision from R four to R three.
We have a representative from uh Park West Estates here tonight, Stephen Zager, uh I believe would like to say a few words regarding the rezoning.
I think I'm addressing right issue.
Certainly.
You talked about law from R four to R three, uh does that allow for the development of condominiums on R three?
R three allows for uh two, two house or two, two condos basically on a lot.
Well, that needs what we're requesting, what we would like to do with future consideration. So I don't think we really have an issue, but we might like to maybe address what my my thoughts are, so that we can use a way of 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 consider.
Quick note, the current rezoning goes from R four to R three, I guess the the issue is whether or not, you know, we go one step further like from R three to R two, which would prevent condominiums from the original, uh you know, the original intent of the excuse me, of the TIF rebate agreement that's in place was to provide nineteen single family residential lots. So that's probably uh part of the issue, but current, the current rezoning would allow two condos on one lot.
Maybe we'll have just a few minutes of information shared in the versus formally request for anything to change, since it is gonna be zoned according to what we would like to see for future use. Uh one of the things that I wanted to do that I was gonna share with you where we're at on subdivision and this map really is a possible reason why the city has, is a map that I use my office for uh in West Orange, West Orange. The particular area referring to out here is Park Place West, and that's owned by a corporation, which is Wally Day, who's who probably presented the original plan to me, myself and Jay Johnson. And uh I also have an interest with Brad Newey, who's a man back here who contemplating even can for future use, what kind of homes could be developed in here. This is the reason that's there, and I also just wanna give Brad Newey a form of idea. And uh we got the uh town collection at this warehouse back there, and we were gonna clean that up back there. We got a couple potential people reviewing the plans. And then uh so we have a real strong interest in kinda let those on here, because we think there's uh some opportunity for new tax dollars in the area. One of the reasons I've been communicating with Brad regarding, keeping an open mind regarding uh potential, I'm gonna talk about. This is uh our subdivision here, and uh as you guys are gonna improve the TIF for us, I think we had about uh a neighborhood five hundred thousand dollars invested in streets and sewers. And uh right now, things are pretty slow going. Since we started this, there's a new subdivision on the southern side. There's another subdivision over by the uh airport. And uh Rod could probably tell us about it, and all that, and I can, I got all this stuff in the file, but the reason we wanted to keep our options open, even if we've got to uh readdress our TIF, is that uh things are changing, they're changing. Landscape's changing pretty bad. One of the things that you won't stop to be aware of is that uh Sunrise West, which is behind uh about a different church, have built twenty five condominiums, twenty five different buildings back there, it was a total of fifty condominiums. They just bought another thirty six acres to build another hundred condominiums back there, in two units, built this. Reason I know this, I hope I'm not, I'm not trying to talk against my church, but I was on the council when I set that up. I was the president of the council, we did that development. So one of the things that, I guess the reasons that I got involved with the with the current development, uh the director, I guess, of the corporation, is that uh we need to do something to get this thing into a legitimate situation. And as we look at potentials here, I kinda like being here, and friendly here, and still behind you, talking about what we may need to reconsider. Uh I'd like to use the information I'm gonna pass out to you, that uh will keep you informed of what's what's going on. To kinda do this out in the other file, I'm just. First thing I'm gonna pass around is if we do seek approval to uh to all the kind of building that we got some drawings, different things we could build in our city. And uh the units that we're talking about are very compatible with residential apartment, matter of fact, they succeed best with residential apartments because of two unit. So I'm gonna pass these around, just had to look at it. Because anything that we just talked about would not be uh anything of low scale, but it's something very affordable for people in that the city, nice housing, but uh not in the front. And what we're looking at, basically, is for everyone to keep an open mind on potential uses. This is that article about Sunrise West, that development over there behind the side is five point five million dollars to develop, just what we have left. So we're trying to add another thirty six acres, another unit, you're talking about a pretty substantial development that we would approve over in that area. So makes our nineteen lots look kinda small, but uh still, we've gotta look at the money that we've got as best of it is. And uh I guess what we're saying is Greg asked me down tonight, so we could talk about what we consider we'd like to look at, how to build, uh potential building two units kind of buildings in this subdivision. Uh Greg asked me a good question, just how you consider it. And I said, one of the things we found out, we've got into this thing, the landscape is changing. Uh number one, there's a lot more places to build. Number two, the demand is changing, only for, it's very similar in other areas, that is, there's more and more demand. It's an entry level and it's an exit level, kind of is looking, cause people are wanting less and less problems and hassles to deal with. So what I'm saying, the landscape is changing, and uh usually we wanna do this here, and I know you're familiar with, you know, Chakir, Chakir is done, Chakir is building, but it's not really blending into a residential area. And we think that this is more of a residential type building. So we're just saying that we'd like to keep our options open, and uh able to build some attractive two and condominiums.
Quick question, uh current restrictive covenants wouldn't allow for this type of building, although a majority of homeowners can change those restrictive covenant covenants. Have you broached the current homeowners that are there?
Another thing, that was asked about a couple of times in the email, I wasn't avoiding the question. I think that uh uh for us to approach the current home, which we were, we were through the R, I think you have to have a point. And uh houses that we looked at, the photographs in Iowa City, are very attractive town places. And they're also very attractive because they attract a lot of retirees and people like that. I think that that is the kind of thing that's gonna make people, uh in the current owners, which are the three lots that were sold, compared to the nineteen year old there, look at this thing as something that might be, let's get the neighborhood going versus being itself. So we haven't officially asked it, but on the same token, we don't think we're gonna ask before we get permission. And we know that there'll be some steps that we have to take. And uh my attitude is, if you take it right, people love it, go along with it. That's where we're at right now, like I said, we're gonna keep it, it's R three, we're okay with it. I hope I'm not opening a can of worms, cause I think it was a good butter off up and down the road and.
Why uh what's the reasoning for uh houses not coming in there?
Why aren't they coming in?
Yeah.
Well, I think we've been halted from, yeah, I think that uh I think the economy's a factor. I think the number of places that we have available to choose from is a factor. But it worked very hard for the dollars that have been spent, you know?
Well, the way I understand from other people, and I've been around for a long time, is that number one, they they would like to come in West Burnetton. And number two is because of the property that you had. I don't know what your specs are as far as building up there, but when you started, it's like you have to build a twenty-five hundred square foot house. It had to be so big, it had to be this way, and it had to be this way. And people of, three people that I know of, said they just didn't wanna do that. Now, is there any way that instead of building these, that you can set those lots, I know those lots are pretty good size, where you could end up going to the range of the hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes to blend into Melville, so that they would possibly match at the same way, so people can just buy the homes that?
I think it's both, but right behind this is a great, I was involved with it. And I didn't have anything to do with the layout of the lots, I'm not complaining about it. But one of the things that you find out is after the fact, sometimes you learn more than you discovered out. In terms of our attitude towards selling and promoting the property, we've been pretty aggressive. And, uh, one of the things, I appreciate your question, because we're certainly not closed minded. We're even, uh, we've done some advertising where you will actually find it's part of the lot. So I know what that said initially, to be honest with you.
Well, how big does a house have to be on those lots? Huh?
Eighteen hundred.
Uh, single, a brand style home be okay, or does it have to be a double? A double, a two-story?
No, it doesn't have to.
I mean, it can be an eighteen hundred square foot house. Does it have to have two-car garage or a three-car garage?
I think it has to have two.
And if somebody wants to park a boat out in front of their house, they can do so? If somebody had a boat, I mean, or a camper, are they allowed to park it, or do they have to build another garage to be able to put that in?
I don't think there's a restriction on that. I think there is.
I think so, yeah. It was, it was, it was pretty restrictive, Rick, when you first come out with those covenants.
Right.
It was.
And that's what I'm trying to do, have they tried to lessen that to bring people in, instead of changing?
Well, right now, again, I appreciate the question, because, uh, having covered this thing a little later in the game, I didn't get any chance to, uh, should we say, operate the incentives or look at any restrictions that they were arguing with, because we never had, we haven't had any input since then.
Right, and it's just, I, you know, it's, well, for an example, let's say eighteen hundred square foot house. I don't know what the going rate on there, but let's say, uh, the average is, um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, all of a sudden, you know, you're looking at a problem because you're not selling. Uh, instead of buying, building condos or what, is it drop that down to fifteen hundred square feet? And if they only spend a hundred and fifty thousand in a ranch style, I mean, it can blend in to, uh, Melville, with all those houses over that side. And maybe the size of the lots is that you could re, I don't know if you could redo those or not, to cut them so that you could have a fifteen hundred square foot house into one of the size lots.
I think, but you think.
And then be able to drop down.
If you're a fan, it's, uh, something that you, so.
But.
I don't, I don't, no, it sounds like we're complaining. I think what I'm trying to say is that.
No, these are just questions.
There's a lot to be learned from looking at what's going on in the marketplace. And I think that we're losing some, I think we will continue this with general, in the housing market, that, oh, that we will need to build more condominiums, because I, that's what the demand is at.
Well, the business was going, all of a sudden houses started shooting up, and it started going to two hundred, and then three hundred and fifty thousand, and then four hundred thousand, and then I, there's some in town, five hundred thousand. Who's gonna buy them after a while? I mean, in, the economy you're saying is going down, everybody's going down in there. Those houses are gonna be set there empty at that time. Where, I would, I mean, I have a lot of young people that like to go ahead and be able to afford a house. When houses and finance was down, then people started buying again. And which is a buying's market, which I can't, even though, even the things were starting to go down and job wise and that, companies don't wanna pay the high price now. Um, so what we need to look at is houses between that market of a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, instead of looking at two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, which shouldn't even exist anymore.
One of the things I've noticed, if you look back at some, you're gonna take a look at later on, is that, uh, condominium really does exactly what you're talking about. It allows you to build two units on one lot and divide in half, because you have two.
I, I understand, yeah.
And the other thing is it puts you into a more affordable house, because you can look at something maybe near a hundred and forty thousand.
And the best for somebody to make money off it is buy the whole unit, rent the other side, and be able to live in the other one, and make money.
But it does, it does justify.
Steve, you, you mentioned that you don't know what was said prior to this, okay?
Well, I wonder if we did.
And were you in, were you in partnership before this?
I would be with the five, if you know what I'm saying.
Well, when this went, when this was all being planned, Wally actually had another partner in on this, and there was four or five different, uh, layouts for, for that. And then finally, this one came up, and it, it looked pretty good. During all those conversations, and even with that conversation, the council was, or s, part of the council, let me say part of, not all, at least one, was, um, against TIF in this area. And the reason, one of the reasons I feel this council went ahead and tipped this area was because during this whole process, it was talked about being single-family housing. Not once was ever, ever, ever mentioned condominiums. Matter of fact, during the conversation, it was, Wally had said that it would be upper scale. Several times, he said it'd be upper scale, single-family, and that's what's gonna separate this from the other, and that's why they would sell. He stressed that, and stressed that. We, we the council, put money in this for that reason. Now, now you come along and you want to change that, and you should honor the original intent. Whether it's being sold or not, you should still market that for what that was intended for, and what we tipped that area for. Single-family, upper-scale housing. All right, I'm gonna have a problem putting condominiums in there. I'm gonna tell you upfront, right here, right now. That's not what we were promised by the developer, and you're part of that development, and you should stick with that. You, if, if you don't stick with it, you got, we should de-tiff it for you. You should, you should say, we're not keeping our bargain, let us de-tiff it, and we'll just do it on our own. And, you know, I, I, I think, I also think that you're not, you're not being fair to the people that's already built houses there, or to the neighbors around there that supported this project during the time that we asked. I asked at, at a lot of football games and, and talking to people, if they wanted that developed, if they thought that that would be a, a good asset to their, and they, a lot of them said, yeah, you know, we, we hated it when those apartments went in there. And we, we would love to have single families in, single-family houses. That was one of the big selling points. So I think you know where I stand.
See, the other thing I'm looking at this one right here is that he got a two-bedroom house, or condo, excuse me, for eleven hundred and fifty square feet at a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Then down here, you have a three-bedroom that equals, uh, three-bedroom, twenty-one, thirty-eight square feet for a hundred and ninety-four thousand. I can't.
Those are just samples and stuff.
Yeah, I can't see where somebody's gonna spend a hundred and ninety-four thousand and buy a condo compared to a house. A hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that you could work something out where you could put a eleven hundred and fifty square foot house, and possibly two on that to blend in with Melville, and some young couple would be happy with a two-bedroom, two-bath, with a full basement. Do these have basements? So probably the a hundred and ninety-four thousand would, then the a hundred and nineteen would not. Okay.
Steve, would you be willing to let us off the hook on the TIF? To put condos in?
Well, um, I guess I would like to come back to your earlier comments where, um, I, I think that one of the things that we're looking at is how to have the most flexibility possible. And, uh, sort of, give me a pretty good lecture about what originally was planned and.
Promised.
Promised, and I'm getting at just that, you know, the crystal balls are pretty hard to find.
And I agree.
Again, like I was talking about, we're not trying to outshine aftercard as much as planned, maybe some students. We're, we're sure of what is going on by the numbers that we're giving you about the number of condominiums that are being built. We're talking about that is enough of kind of training. So by bringing this information here, at least, to give you some, some things to show what it's all about, we can start the thought process about, of how these can be blended into residential areas. They are blended into residential areas very successfully. Again, that's a fact. I can show you those and have us get you those places. It is not offensive to have a two-unit condominium that's very attractive to be done in a residential area. We're doing it in Burnetton right now also. It's not offensive. And the neighbors don't look at this like, I got a trailer park over there next door. That's, it's not that kind of a problem. And I don't feel like they're being, I don't feel like they're being let down that the, the development has done properly. What I've talked to my partners about is what can we do to encourage growth, which is good for us and the burnetton? Even though I wasn't at the roots of a meeting, I still went through different agreements. And what we did is that, basics of what we did was we, we provided the money for the streets and sewers. So that we'll come back, deal with developing the property. Now, we're just talking about, we don't wanna refund on the money, or we don't wanna give up any opportunities that we've got to recollect some of that money, we did. But we'd like to keep as open a mind as possible as to what's gonna introduce them in that area. So if someone is implying that this is offensive, I don't agree with that, because it, we're not very successful in these areas.
Well, Steve, my, this is my own personal opinion, is that, you know, you, not necessarily you, but we was told that there was gonna be single-family. Well, you're saying that you can make these blend in. You can make the building blend in. But now, on my block, say, if I bought one of them, now I've got twice as many people as neighbors, I've got twice as many kids out playing in my street, twice as many baseballs coming through my window. You're jamming more people into this area. If I'm gonna spend the money for one of them lots, I don't want a condo next to me. I want just the number of houses that you've got. I don't want the double of them people in my neighborhood. And that car screaming up and down the streets. You know, say you got fifteen cars for single-family, you put something like that in there, then you got thirty. If I was buying one of them, I wouldn't want that.
See, the.
My personal opinion.
And, and I had to go along with Mark and John, is, you know, the condo, I mean, if you're gonna build condominiums, is, is where they should've went, is where your houses are now. That would might've been blend, blend in, but not with the circles that's going in, in Melville, and the houses right in there. I, I just, that's hard to see me blend in. Now, up by the apartments, I don't see any problem.
You go, uh, very good. On the other side of the road.
On the other side of the road, I do not see any problem across the street there.
What about those front lots that face those apartments, what's wrong with making those condos?
Well, and that I might squeeze in, okay?
Yeah.
But the, the condos that would actually blend in would be the ones where you got the four houses at now. You got that new ones being built and the other ones. I could see that blending in. But the culversacks, I, mm, I just can't see. But only by suggestion wise, if you could take one of those lots and split them in half, and, and drop, and, and say go from eighteen hundred square feet to a twelve hundred square foot house, then, yeah, and you'll sell them. And then go up there and build your condos across the street, then I'd have to take a look and see about the front.
Oh, you got a comment?
Rick was talking about splitting the lots, you know, R three, one, two, three, single-family houses, and have a seventy-five hundred square foot lot.
Seven hundred?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred square foot lot.
How many of them lots are over fifteen hundred square foot? Or fifteen thousand?
All of them, aren't they?
All of them.
Okay. And then you gotta run and ease.
Basically, from, you're talking, you're talking about doing, or suggesting to them to do, what, you know, what a condo would do.
Yeah.
You're putting two units on one lot, and you're telling them to split this lot and put two houses on the split lots.
And that's not what that intent was, and that's not what sold us on that project. And.
But I'm just saying that if you blend in Melville, it'd look a lot better to split them up than it would putting them both together.
Do you remember the archway that he was wanting to put up over?
No, I don't, because that was before.
Wally was wanting to put an archway over it, that something said, something about the elite area or something like that, because it was going to be upper scale, single-family. And that's why it was plotted like that, and he said that that would make, because of that, it, it would make those lots sit. With that, that's why we wanted to be a partner in this venture, okay? Now, at that time, they knew the shop was going to, you know, they were having trouble. We, we knew that the economy wasn't the best. We knew Excite had already left. We knew that General Electric had cut back four hundred people. All that stuff was known.
I think that I've got a little higher opinion of what we're thinking about from the past when we decided. And I have probably done a good job of sharing that at this point in time. I've also under the, uh, opinion that, uh, development is good, growth is good. And, uh, I didn't really come here to do any other than, I think, plant the seeds for how to, how to take this to another step. Talking about what is happening, like, everybody's comments are, uh, very true comments and very real considerations. And that, I wouldn't wanna argue about those thoughts, or what was promised, or anything else like that. Uh, I, I do feel that, like I said, this is my work board that I keep up here, and this is about growth that's going, and there's next to me, so we have here for, uh, South East Road. So, again, as I look at the, the scope of land here in West Burnetton, what we wanna do, we do have to live with what we started out, but I agree, and we have some things that have to be considered. But my one thing I'd ask you to do is think about everything that you wish to have done differently after that. And sometimes that can lead into some kind of compromise. I think you talked about maybe some of these units along here, and we all have a piece of land across the road also. So, again, I'm glad we're here, not talking after the fact, we have a lot of promises to do anyway, but I'd like to be able to talk to the contractors too, about what some potential would be, to do something along here and maybe across the road. But at least with the idea that we came and asked how you feel about it. And back in here, I think that, uh, Mark brought up a good point about, back in here, that the people wanna go back. And back in here, I think that Mark brought up a good point about, back in here, if the people want to build back, they, they want to put a, a house, but they don't want to spend nothing. I think they shouldn't be allowed to have that. Right to know what's there. And one of our original positions was, before we got here, what about right here? What about right here? Could we do something for these lots along that road right there? So, again, I like the just kind of answer. I don't even understand you all that long. You can look at the empty basement passed out as, as an alternative. And if something comes up along here, where we, uh, when I've just cleared two or three of these lots, maybe we'll have to ask for some of them to the typical, or some change to the typical, as we need to use.
Steve, are, are, are you aware that Planning and Zoning's gonna look at this in January and talk about rezoning all those to R-twos?
I heard that it was, uh, zoning, all I knew was R-four to R-three for sure. I didn't know what the next step was. And like I said, across the road there, next to the apartments, we don't have that there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that, that's not being considered in this, but I think, I think you need to make sure that he's aware and, and can be prepared for that because you're talking about having a public hearing in January with Planning and Zoning, uh, wanting to zone all these to R-two. And I know there's some on council that'll strongly agree with that and some that would say, well, maybe we need to look at that. I, I think we need to keep- And he has partners in it. That doesn't change it, but I think we need to keep open enough minds to look at it and talk about it. And realize what we all want is that area to get developed and full of tax-paying buildings. Now, I, I remember sitting, not here, but in council meetings and like areas, telling Wally that I thought his expectations were too high. I mean, I, that was his expectations and, and he's the one that made them. But I also remember telling him that he made it so restrictive, I couldn't build a house there. Very quite honestly, uh, one issue come up, a dog kennel. I couldn't have my dog there. I mean, he made that real restrictive on purpose. And, and I, as a friend and as a councilman, told him, I said, Wally, I think you're making this too restrictive. I think he did. I think that project is suffering for it now because it was made a little too ritzy-looking, acting, blah, 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 okay?
But that's what sold us.
I, I, well, that's not totally, I don't think, what sold all of us, no. I, I think we were all looking at getting nineteen more houses, paying taxes. And, and I would've, I would've voted for the project if he'd have told me they were hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar houses, not three-hundred thousand. And I think most of council would've. I, and I guess that's my point is, is I agree with you, John, and I totally agree with you, except I think we need to realize things have changed. That plan isn't working. And I can, I can testify that plan that they're trying, that they were originally trying to do there is not working. And, and you can tell that by driving by there and seeing the lack of, of construction and houses being built. I think we ought to try to stay at least open-minded enough that if they bring us some kind of a proposal, that we could look at it. And I, I guess I drove out there today thinking, well, if they wanted to put up condos, uh, and you gotta realize, and I know Steve mentioned this, you can't think of a condo as an apartment. And we don't have a lot of condos in this area, and, and this is all new and fresh to us. But, but if you do drive to Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, I mean, those are all condos, all along those roads are built, and they're beautiful homes. And, and most of them are more expensive than I would be able to afford, quite honestly. I mean-
My, uh, my brother is an insurance agent at the National Insurance. I've got another man that did, who did a lot of this. I was inside of him, I'm sitting there looking at these things. And I'm telling them, they're very attractive. They're not, they're not like, oh my God, it's next door. You know, they're gonna have a clamp that's next over. It could be done very nicely. And I think if that goes on, there's no half of the year. This isn't a question. I, I was, they, they laid this out. I, I drove back around this cul-de-sacs. And one thing they did is they did it right. I mean, those are white cul-de-sacs. I was really impressed with everything, but the cement, because they did a great job, and these are big lots. So I'm just saying the same thing, I guess, that you're saying is that we keep an open mind if we look at maybe some of this area here. And as I pointed out, that there's some other interest that, by other people in different areas. We want to figure out how, if West Burlington is the place to build houses, how, what is the combination that it's gonna take? We're saying that our research, and this isn't a opinion thing, man, we're developers are there to make money, sell houses, and make things happen. In order to come up with a good opinion, you gotta have some information to work on. What I'm saying is we're, we're convinced that this is where it's going. And that someplace in West Burlington could be a good idea, that residential and condominium side by side. But you gotta look at those pictures and see what these look like. You don't know it.
Who takes care of the condos on the outside?
The, uh, the, the condominium agreement normally, uh, I say normally, I don't know what normal is, but- And, and outside is part of the community association.
Okay, so they have somebody that comes in and, and designs the outside, the landscaping and everything? And they go ahead and do the trimming and the cutting and everything else for the condos then?
Typically. Typically.
I mean, if I wanted to put a purple bush on my side, then I can't do that.
Well-
He hesitated.
Well, it depends, it depends on how they draw up the association. Depends on their bylaws and rules, no different than anything else. I mean-
I'm gonna agree to that.
Yeah, I mean-
Agreed, and you're fine.
I, I can tell you out there at the Shot and Curt Development, those condos there, you can't do much outside. You know, they're designed and restricted, and you can't really go outside and do anything with those. You can do anything you want inside to your condo, but outside you can't do anything. So that they all-
You know, one of the things about living in Burlington and West Burlington is that we don't have what the other cities got. But what we do have is, we gotta be a little more flexible, and I think we're not Iowa City, Cedar Rapids. So, but we don't have to bury head and sand. Maybe there's opportunities here to do things.
Well, I've seen a golf, I was, you know, the condos out there at the golf course. There's still a lot empty out there, but, and they, they, and they sell, so.
I, I think that, the reason I got involved with this to begin with is that-
And I think they were-
It's a generic for growth.
Because I think those were two-hundred thousand out there. Now, I can't, that's, that's, you know, out there, you, you're talking two-hundred thousand per unit. But they got the golf course. Where-
I think the housing-
You got a hundred and ninety-four, no golf course.
My opinion with hands on it right now is a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, I think that's what we're doing. I think if you house at that price is the question.
Now, go back and I just want to ask a question. In front of the road going by? Now, those would all, if they did put condos there, yeah, they would be facing the road.
Have to face the street.
The street.
And like the street.
Okay.
Steve, you just said that you think the, the market is the hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. Is that what you just said?
I think you have a much bigger market at that rate. Because if the people going into the house, you have, you know, less size. And that's, like I said, that's what we expect, we're gonna look for.
And, and you know, I think, I think Rod mentioned something to that extent before. You know, the covenants are so tight and, and, you know, the lots are forty thousand dollars and, you know, time that, you're not, you're gonna have more than a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Yeah, okay, time you get a house built. So those houses aren't gonna be in that area, and they never were intended to. So then, when, when partnership was, was built into, or was gathered up and joined and put together, I don't think anybody expected, maybe hoped, but not expected that to be an overnight project or a year project to, to, to shoot up. They knew that they were going into a venture that was few people to pick from. Not the hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home where everybody is, as you just mentioned. So what I'm asking is, don't try to put those houses in that lot just for the sake of building because that's not what that was intended for.
And I said the hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty, one of the things that foundation does is allow us that type of development. That combining the two more projects.
I understand that. I know, I know what that does, but I'm gonna have a hard time, to be quite honest with you. Um, I'll think about it a lot, believe me.
One thing I hate about these soundbites on TV, remember, everyone out, everything you said is gonna be recorded.
You bet. Yeah.
If you reminded me what we said-
Yeah.
Listen, I have to trust, I understand exactly what you said.
Yeah.
But best way plans have got to be modified, sometimes be successful. That's, that's all I would say. And I appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Steve, are you and Wally going to revamp the covenants that, that are currently in place? Because as, as we've made, mentioned, the, the covenants are really restrictive. And I think they had to have a three-car garage and the doors had to be shut all the time, et cetera. Because I looked at those and I'm like, hm.
It's not the developer. That's the homeowners up there right now. Those three people.
Well, it's the developer too, because they enjoy the lot.
But those homeowners have the votes.
Yeah.
One of the things that-
Not enough yet.
Always the minutes of the government, you know, trust me, we have a lot of the space that you need. And I appreciate this, and I appreciate everybody's input and involvement. And one thing I keep telling them is, don't say never with anything, including any offer. But modify, anybody shake a corner next time, or that's the whole nature of it. Maybe you started out with something, but maybe now I can look at and say, I might have done it exactly the same way. You gotta start with some kind of plan. And after the fact, which I can show you that notebook, that's when Sunny Side opened up. That's when West Avenue subdivision opened up. That's when the other Johnson subdivision up there opened up. I mean, these are just facts. I mean, you bring up things that, that we didn't, that we said, I'm just saying. But what occurred after that? And I'm just saying, sometimes you gotta look at all the factors considered and figure out how to come up with plans that makes everybody happy. And that's probably why I'm here tonight, is just to say, how can we figure out a way to encourage growth with not disrupting anybody? Evidence for too restrictive? Yeah, we're gonna look at all that stuff. That's part of being in business. That's what you have to do. You have to look at these things. Come in and have your thoughts and considerations and input. That, it's just part of the game to be in the business.
Well, the other thing I would suggest, you know, are you gonna finish that sign? The brick sign. There's no lettering, just indicated that it's Park, Park Place West. There's no letters on your brick sign, and I'm thinking, maybe people can't find it. It just looks kinda tacky that if you turn down in that expensive neighborhood and you don't have any lettering on your sign.
I wouldn't put it that any kind of suggestion of all of these things are paying attention to me, just like everything used, that people pay attention to me. And you're talking about the restrictions or all that kind of stuff. Because this is all about how to make planning and get your money back. So if people don't listen or anything offensive, hey, I'm not in that here. I'm here to just to keep an open mind and figure it out, develop plan in West Burlington. Just appreciate your kindness. I appreciate you, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Steve, one more, one more thing, if you, if you don't mind? I wanna say thanks because, to you on the, the, the old trucking place. You guys have really, really done a wonderful job out there. You planted grass and trees in the back.
That was a-
Seam in it, or blacktopped all that in, around the building.
We've got a couple coming, we're, we may be back here and paint some of these again.
I promise that I will paint my house here before long, too. I promise I will paint my house.
You said that on tape.
Huh? I, I promise.
We're gonna paint those buildings next month, so that'll be the next one.
We all heard that now. We got that now.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I didn't promise anything anymore, that's-
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Before you have the ordinance, the third reading.
Motion approved.
motion for support, and other discussion.
Yes, my question is, we're just talking about making this to R-three in this one. But then we're gonna do this all over again?
This has to go through A and Z.
If you want, if your desire is to go from R-three to R-two, Planning and Zoning would have to hold a public hearing and, and that would be brought forward to the council for-
Can't hear you, could you say that again?
Sorry. If the council decides to go from R-three to R-two, Planning and Zoning would have to hold a hearing. And after that hearing, it would be brought to the city council. City council would act on the ordinance, typically three readings, of course, you can waive one or two readings, so.
So if we make a motion to go with an R-two?
No.
You would make no motion tonight. It has to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission first.
Okay.
They could hold a, they would have to hold a meeting and a public hearing in January at the earliest, uh, to consider rezoning.
But my question is, if we do it to R-three, are they planning on having this meeting? Even if we change it to R-three, are they gonna still discuss changing it to R-two?
Planning and Zoning Commission wasn't planning on doing that. But if it's our desire to set a public hearing and bring that forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that can be done.
I thought that it was our desire.
You could, we could, they could have a discussion at that point. Well, their next meeting's on January thirteenth, so the public hearing wouldn't be set yet, et cetera. It's just a timing issue.
Here, if you read their, the memo that was sent to you. Council suggests that Planning and Zoning consider changing the zoning for the entire subdivision to R-two, one-family, non-traditional residential. Planning and Zoning discussed the issue at their meeting on December second and agreed with council's proposal. Planning and Zoning will hold a public hearing on January thirteenth to consider zoning all nineteen lots in Park Place West subdivision to an R-two zoning district. So they're planning on talking about it on the thirteenth.
Notice would have to be sent out to all of the property owners and the developer, of course, as a property owner.
But what this does tonight-
Doesn't have anything to do with it.
Well, it doesn't have, it, I mean, it's going, it's leading up to them looking at, again, to change it from, if you don't do anything, if you, if you turn this down tonight, it stays at R-four, which means-
They ought to come in with a multi-family plan tomorrow.
And put a seven-story high-rise up.
If I owned it, that's what I'd do. I'd say, okay. Mister and Misses City, you've got it, zone R-four, so that's what I wanna do, thanks. It was, and we've never changed it. We're correcting a mistake here, and we, we've been in a lot of arguments about this. But we're correcting something that we should've done.
To begin with.
However, long, however long ago, when we approved this thing, we should've done this.
Well, shouldn't the zoning committee even pick this up too?
Well, they finally found it. They found it and passed it on to us, finally. And, and we need to fix this, and this is the best fix we can do right now. And if majority of council wants to make it more restrictive, so be it. But right now, we need to get this fixed so it's not multi-family because nobody had that intention at all, and not even the developer. But they could very easily come to us tomorrow with a plan, if we don't pass this, saying, hey, it's zoned R-four, and I wanna put multi-family in there. And they'd have a perfect right to do that. I mean, they would just be following how we had it zoned.
And, and it, it doesn't matter what the intent was. I think we all sat here and probably everybody in their, in their, you know, dreams thought this was gonna be high-scale housing, and that's kinda what we all wanted. But when it came right down to it, that the development agreement, that you all agreed upon the sign, the only thing that says in there is the developer intends to construct housing units on such property after certain improvements have been made, constructed. There's nothing in there that specifies single-family homes in this development agreement.
You said it doesn't matter, and I beg to differ, it does matter.
No. This is what we have to live by.
Okay, I understand that, but I beg to differ when you say it doesn't matter, so, anyway, am I called for this?
If you're ready for the question. Roll call.
Johnson?
Hi.
Please?
Hi.
Filger?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Old business being none. I do wanna make a comment, uh, under the consent agenda tonight. Uh, we accepted Monica Messler's resignation from Planning and Zoning, and I wanna publicly thank her for almost thirty years of service to the city. I think she's probably about the longest serving commission member on that commission, so they, they're planning on spending more time in the winter months where it's warmer, and there's, there's a, you know, there's a good case. We have all these homes in town where families could live, but everybody becomes snowbirds in the winter.
I know a couple people that took their campers and moved down somewhere for a couple months. Yep. Big camp.
Under that, I need a motion to go in the closed session to discuss, uh, union contracts in our section twenty-one point five C.
Sir, will we take a small break before we do that? Okay?
Right.
Support.
Guy go speak up.
I did, I said so.
No, we can't hear you.
So moved.
Support.
Motion for support, a discussion. Roll call.
Fielder?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Take about five minutes, right?
Thanks, sir.
Turn hers up. I can turn hers up.
Oh, you can turn hers up.
Come in there.
Did you send her theirs down?
Sure, yeah.
Been adjusted since all this.
I'll just get the thing out tonight and look at it tomorrow, and then we'll send it down to Berlin to see how they can get it.
So, it would cost fourteen thousand dollars?
No, not really.
It would cost about one base, this thing would be all, the meetings, all the lives.
No, I'm gonna take this one down to Berlin tomorrow. And they're gonna look it into their system, try and get a date in time as soon as we're able, might everybody know. This is our test run, make sure that's all works. I don't wanna tell everybody it's gonna be there, seven o'clock on Thursday, and have it not over there.
We'll shut that off.
Half my population.
First, you shut the, shut the mics off, let it record. Well, leave them on to take this, well-
Oh, yeah, cause we're still gotta come back that one. I think I'll work when they play that, cause it's gonna make houses like a dead session.
I might this time here.
Stop it and then start it again, yes?